I'm going to call this meeting of the school committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engage lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me in this meeting.
United States of America, into a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For communication? Seeing none. This is a special meeting, although it's not called a special meeting, it's to make up for the, a couple of items that should have been on the meeting we had last week that was canceled because of the snow. We are also going to vote a budget for, for a public, for a public hearing which will take place on April 4th.
11th?
11th. The public hearing's 11th. It's the 4th that will vote the budget, the final budget on the 11th.
Yes.
Those are the dates.
So, the hearing is back on the 4th?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're able to?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, no, that's why we're having this meeting tonight, is so we can have the public hearing on the 4th. Otherwise, if we didn't vote until next week, we wouldn't make the time requirement to have it the following week. Okay? So that's why we're having this special meeting. And then there are two other items that, that were on the agenda for last week that are time-sensitive, so we're going to take those up too. So the first, recognitions, we have recognitions.
I have a couple things to mention. One, East Gloucester's having their play this weekend. I forget what they're putting on.
Jungle Book.
Jungle Book, Friday, Saturday, and then there's a Monday evening performance as well. I'm sure it'll be great, like always. And the second recognition I'd like to make is the Gloucester Education Foundation hosted their annual Power of Play at the high school this weekend on Sunday, and we had an amazing amount of volunteers coming from Gloucester High School and from O'Malley Innovation Middle School helping. So there was a tremendous turnout of students, which was really great, and the kids all had a great time. It was a really packed field house. So it was a great event, and I would especially like to recognize John Christopher, who was the custodian on duty, who was just, you know, indispensable. Eve was a help in every single way. He was there early, he just did everything and anything, and he was assisted by Maureen, and I don't know Maureen's last name.
Maureen.
Anyway, Maureen also. So I just wanted to give a big shout-out because it does help the process and the event build also. That's it.
Okay, that's it. I would...
I just want to recognize the cheerleaders for winning. Were you going to do that?
No, no.
Oh, sorry. For winning the, was it the state division championship?
New England.
The New England.
They keep winning.
Even better, yes.
They won the conference, then they won the state.
They kept winning the other. Won two, two within a short period of time, so congratulations and kudos to the cheerleaders.
And I'll just mention that I attended the Doc's Side fundraiser last Friday night. It was a very nice evening, and they, once again, did very well, did a very nice job performing. All right. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. There's just one item on that, which is a field trip. So we have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Is it, no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. We have two action items. I would like to take these out of order, and I would like to start with the approval to suspend the fundraising section of the wellness plan and allow the class of 2018 to operate the school store for the remainder of 2017-2018 school year as recommended by the program subcommittee at its meeting on March 19th. And the reason I want to move it up is because we have four students here who I believe are here for the sole purpose, unless you're going to weigh in on the budget, to make the case.
I think I did as budgetarian.
So, anyway, we'd like to start with the program.
So, programs met, and it was a one-item agenda. We had previously met, and the students that are here came and presented their request to continue running the school store this year because it was suspended to their surprise at the end of October. So, we listened to their reasoning why the school store is important to their fundraising for their class. We heard from Martha Jo Fleming, our food service director, as to, you know, considerations of nutrition and financial impact. And then we met on the 19th to discuss it further, to get a little more information and have a further deliberation on the topic. And so this motion comes out of that deliberation. So you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, make the motion.
So I move that this whole school committee approve to suspend the fundraising section of the wellness plan and allow the class of 2018 to operate the school store for the remainder of 2017-2018 school year.
Second?
Discussion.
So are, you know, you can chime in, but I think the reason that we, that I voted to suspend it is more the, because they did not know they would not have this particular source of revenue for their class. And so in the interest of, you know, being empathic to them and their goals for running their class in a financial way, I thought it was okay to, I thought it was okay to continue this school.
Further discussion?
Questions?
Questions? Sure.
So I didn't know a lot about this, as you know, because I had to speak with you a few minutes ago coming into this, because I didn't attend the meeting, and I don't have any resources from the meeting other than hearing from what happened now. So it's my understanding we're just suspending it for this one purpose only at the school for the class of 2018?
For the remainder of the year.
Exactly. For the, for that class to make money, or is it for other classes to make money at the same time?
No, just that.
It just goes to the 2018?
Yes.
So I'm reading the policy, and I'm seeing that there's oversight to food. Who's going to provide the oversight? Is it themselves? Well, we need to know this before we approve them.
They have to have the evidence, please.
So we would need to know that before, I mean, I would want to know that before. I mean, help the food department? No?
No, it's not their job.
So we're going to have no oversight, so we're going to be totally dependent on trusting young adults to, to make the right choices according to the policy. And can I just hear a little bit about, I heard that schools in this area may not be doing this, but maybe near the Boston area do do this, or I just, and that they could be?
Well, I had a handout. So the handout of the North Shore schools did not?
We didn't get that.
We don't have it.
We don't have that. We didn't table this.
We should have it at the next meeting.
This is, we don't have any of this information.
Not that I want to put you off, but tell me should we do it right? That's all.
Can you?
Oh, drop.
I gave you two piles of...
Ah, you did? Okay.
If I may, while this is going around, as far as who obtained one goes, the impact to the district, to this committee, to the school of suspending this policy is negligible. We're not going to notice that it was suspended. The impact to the class, even getting an extra week or two of getting that store back open is appreciable, so that's why I would recommend not tabling it, just getting this through and giving us the time to figure out how next year to make sure the class of 2019 doesn't run into this issue. But for us, it's not going to be a thing.
So to respond to that, if I may, I would just say that if it was to be tabled, I would only agree to like a week, just for us to get more information and maybe have someone here or someone be able to respond to give us information of who maybe could provide the oversight. I was talking to students and heard that they were told at one point that it might mean... Oh, there's somebody. Okay. That it might mean a loss of income somewhere in our budget, and I would just like to know a little bit more about that.
What are your thoughts?
Well, they're being told that, so I'm going to rely on Tom to tell us what that impact is, if it was discussed while you made this decision. For the present here, I haven't seen this yet, so...
Participation rate.
Let's, let's start with asking Principal Cook to talk about oversight.
So, the oversight is really simple. It's the class advisors. So, one, or by the time they're seniors, they have two class advisors with me. That's how we oversee, and that's how we, when we had to, you know, through, through the committee, put an end to it, it was through the advisor and through me, who, you know, I've met with the class and so on, and while it was being run, it's the principal with the class advisors who oversee the students. So they have a lot of oversight and involvement from the adults, and then they, you know, physically man the store and, you know, do that sort of thing, but really it's with a lot of oversight from the adults involved.
And when I meant oversight, I meant they provide food, the install...
Yes, exactly. Precisely. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. You know, right now, Ray and Menery, an advisor to the class, you know, is able to talk about, you know, what they're buying and how it fits the healthy snacks guidelines and all that sort of thing, and the students are knowledgeable about that when they're ordering as well. So yeah, they're not sort of on their own making those sorts of decisions about what's going in and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then my second question went to the fact that I believe the students were told that this program ended when it did because it was competing with our program, which makes sense, but I'm just wondering if this gets approved, what is, what, where is the damage from the competition? In other words, what is the hit to the district? Because from what the students were saying to me earlier was that they have the potential of making $7,500, which is great to go towards this class, which is a motivator to want to approve this, however, I'm curious to know, does the administration support this? If they do, if they don't, and why? And what is the impact of making this decision? I just want to have all the information before me, before I make a decision, because I want to help them. I want them to be able to raise money, but I want to know why this was taken away to begin with, and why the majority of schools don't allow this, so there's something missing to this conversation that needs to be talked about.
I'd like to suggest that if it's tabled, that food service and other members of the wellness committee are here to provide you with the similar types of presentations that they presented to the program, so that you hear it directly from them. I mean, I can give you a summary.
Because somebody else can give it to them.
I can give you a summary, but I...
As long as I know it's...
Yeah. I mean, there's another piece of paper that speaks to an increase, with the exception of one month of the daily participation rates, once the school store was shut down. And I also want to acknowledge that it was very abrupt at the timing or the way in which this particular class was notified. Bear in mind that this wellness policy has been in place, and there are members of that committee since 2010. There are reasons that it's been approved since then, so there are reasons why that's there, reasons which have to do with issues of diet, health-related, and potentially financial. And again, to repeat, based on this year's numbers, there is at least a 5% overall increase once the school store had been closed. The oversight issue, I yield to the principal, but we're all very, very busy, and I hope that that in fact can be the case. If it, if this were to remain policy going next year, then the school store is selling food. Does that mean that DECA sells food? Does that mean that the National Honor Society sells food? Does that mean that all the sports teams sell food?
That's not the law.
And who's going to regulate that? I'm just saying for next year. There was the, the issue that initially...
Hold on, to be fair. Let, let Rich finish.
He's just pontificating. Staffing has a question, he's just steamrolling.
Wait, no, he's answering my question.
You asked me a question, I'm trying to answer the question.
It's a long answer.
Well, there are...
Let him answer the question.
Initially, and you have retracted that, but you were very concerned about the class gift, and you had, you had said that it was about $4,000 or so, and you have since retracted that, but the, the cost of the gift and the overall expense is an issue as well. In, over the decades, the fees that classes pay has been $25 a year for probably decades. There hasn't been a change. The, the students have said that, that they can, I think it's a net revenue generated of around $7,500, I think you said?
The school store, yes.
Yeah, school store. I'm taking a figure of, let's say, 200 students, you divide it, it comes up to about $37 per student, and let's say $40, so that would be an increase of $10 in dues per year going forward that would cover the cost of what the seniors would earn for the school store, so that with a $10 increase on an annual basis, we offset the potential for any detraction of daily participation rate as a result of the school store. I'm done pontificating.
I appreciate it.
Can we change it on that?
I'd like to hear from you.
Okay. So, in terms of the class dues, well, that is ideal. A lot of times, students either can't afford to pay it or they don't pay it, and that we've had tables at every student, our parent teacher night, every event where parents are there with potentially checkbooks, or they know about it ahead of time, and the classes before us have still had a very hard time getting every class due, and this is kind of securing it in order for us to be able to realize we can still afford to pay for those who cannot afford to pay the, the class dues, whether it be a financial reason, whatever, and that's part of it. So we, because we ultimately just want to make it so that every student can afford to go to every senior event, but also be able to participate in school to the full extent as every other period.
Okay. I want to address also one piece of paper that was presented, which was the participation.
Yeah.
And I didn't bring this up the other night because I wasn't making this, my, my feeling was not purely financially driven, it was kind of the combination of, of the different aspects. And the enrollment in September is 7:50, and the enrollment in February is 7:20. So I just am suspect about, given that that's a key number in the calculation of participation, I don't know where 30 kids went, and so I'm not sure I necessarily, you know, I understand there was an effort made to get to daily participation, but I would really want to know why it was 7:50, 7:43, 7:22, 7:21, if that was part of my rationale onto how I would decide this. Numbers just...
Ten more. Just, just for information, the school store, it was, at the beginning of the year, you ran the school store, and then you were told you had to stop it?
We were told, it was in the course of a week, so...
When, when were you...
It was either the last week of October, the first week of November, but they, we were selling one day at lunch, and then a staff member reached out, I don't know who, I wasn't there, but they said that we weren't allowed to be open, we were closed, and then later we were told we'd be open for the last seven minutes of lunch. We did that for a few days, and then we told that wasn't even allowed, so there was a lot of really non-communication towards us about this issue.
And I just want to get, what is the rationale for this, this school, this school store not to be allowed to be open? What were you told? What were you, why, why, what were you told why you couldn't do it?
Well, first, we were told that they thought we were selling like candy and other things that were not US-made through, but that's not sure we weren't. And then we were told that there is a policy that said that we weren't allowed to do it for years, and just never been enforced, and then we were told that we were in direct competition with the, with the food services, so it's been a lot of different reasons, and we're really frustrated with that at this point, to be honest.
So, what happens, like, there, at the beginning of the school year, these kids are counting on their school store for a majority of their fundraising. There is, as we all know, there are many groups at the high school who do fundraisers. There is a calendar that they have to fill out the beginning of the year for all the different fundraisers for each group. And when they were told at the end of October, beginning of November, most of the calendar was already filled out, so it's hard to come around and get, figure out what they're going to do for fundraisers for the rest of the year when they've already counted on something, and it's already been, you know, the calendar's already full. So it's like, well, where do they go from there? So now they haven't had school stores since November, December, January, February, and most of March, almost all of March probably. So they, you know, we thought that we could help them for the last two months of the school year by reinstating school store, but just this class for only two months to help them with their financial burden of the prom class gift that they have to do. You know, this, these are, this, not having this money coming in has been very detrimental to their class this year, so...
Well, this, you also would have to, it's not just the, it's competitive foods and beverages also would have to be suspended if, if you really want to go into the policy, but there's a couple of other issues. How do you report your financing?
So what we do is we have a book in the school, in the snack shop, and every person's ownership, they write what they had starting in the money box at the beginning of the day, and then they report what they made over the lunch, and they do it for both lunches. Then at the end of the week, we have, either our treasurer or someone who's higher up in student council, bring it to Ms. Menery.
I haven't done it in a while, and it's mainly my sister's job, but I believe she does bring it to Ms. Menery, and they count it out at the end of the week to see how much we've made that week. And I think we bring it, we make deposits to Ms. Darlin.
Yeah, in the main office, because there's a big book for all the different school clubs and such.
And does that get put in the student activities account?
Exactly.
So that's all accounted for, that's good. I mean, besides not addressing the other piece of that policy, again, I'm very concerned because we create policies, and then we take the legs out from underneath the administration when we ask them to, to enforce them. You know, if a policy needs to be changed, it needs to be changed, but I really, this, I'm very uncomfortable seeing this as an, as an administrative issue until we change our policy. I just, I do not, I'm very uncomfortable with that aspect of it, because any issue can come up, and we can do this, and we, I forget what it was, two meetings ago, where I said, you know, here we are, we make the policies, and, and then we leave you guys out there hanging when we, and I forget what the issue was, but that was exactly what I said, was we make these policies and then, and then we don't support you, and I forget what it was, but that was, and this is concerning me, and this is becoming a habit of ours, so I'll have to go back to that previous thing a couple of meetings ago. I can't remember what it was, and that, that's a major concern for me, and the fact that we also didn't have the competitive foods and beverages in this motion also.
Cool. Just to touch on that point, I don't know if this is going to be something where the policy ultimately is changed, it's more like there was a implementation, defective implementation for equity's sake, we're going to suspend it and try again next year to get a rollout to be smooth. It's not saying we disagree with the policy, we don't want the policy enforced ever, it's just saying this year was a little bit of a cluster, we'd like to just smooth it over and try again next year to do it right.
So I have a question and then a couple comments. So my question is, I'm looking at this that I just brought now, that talks about Manchester-Essays, and that they are not allowed, it looks like most of the communities around us don't allow this, the competitive sell of the food. But in Manchester, on Friday, they allow them to sell coffee and bagels. So I'm wondering if at this program subcommittee, if there was alternative measures discussed to fundraise, because I think we can all agree, it's very difficult having you here and discussing this, because we want you to make money, but we have to make sure that we do it the right way and in a consistent way, in a way that makes sense from the flow of the decision we make today and how it affects next year. I mean, we can say we agree with this now, and we waive the policy, but next year, after getting more information, we decide not to, and then that group's going to come before us and say, well, you did it for 2018, why don't you do it for 2019? So we're trying to make responsible, good decisions based on information, and I think unfortunately tonight, this is getting thrown at some of us who have questions, and, and we want to help, we want you to make the money, but we also need to do what's right. So I'm asking you the question, was there alternative ways of raising money discussed besides selling food at a school store every day, knowing you only have two months left and may not make that much money regardless? So, was that a discussion about an alternative way?
In prior discussions with Martha Jo, and I think Maria created a list when, did some research on other fundraising ideas, car washes, you know, other things like that. So that was discussed, and when, you know, in our deliberations, I had seen, you know, the bagel idea, and we, we had even said, you know, what about, in our meeting with the students, what about at the end of the day when people are going off to their sports, or, you know, is that a time when you could sell because there'd be no conflict with, you know, with food service? So we did discuss other alternatives.
And you decided it wasn't worth, and that was taken?
Well, once, once again, our calendar is very filled up, so there isn't a lot of days that are open for these fundraising activities, at least within the next, this school year.
You have about eight weeks left.
Yeah. And then, yeah, and then with like the selling outside of the athletic doors, like we've tried that before, we had like pizza Fridays or Food Fridays, where we have different stations around the school where people were leaving, they could buy food, they brought in maybe $20 for profit. In terms of like the bagel idea, I mean, is a good idea, I know what you mean, like in terms of something like that, but the school does sell bagels in the morning for breakfast themselves.
And the coffee idea, you're not allowed to have coffee or any beverage like that in class, so it would not work.
Yeah, and then we have begun to look at other alternatives, because we do know this is very imminent for us. We have different snack booths at different schools now. We have one at the college fair that only brought in $30. We've done different things like that. In terms of car washes, every group pretty much does those during the summer, every class does them, every sports team that's in the fall at least does them. So a lot of the fundraisers, either someone else already kind of has a monopoly on them, which we don't want to kind of attach, because you know, but yeah, so we, it's kind of strained, but we are trying to figure out other alternatives, and they did provide a lot of interesting ones.
And how much money do you think you can make in the next eight weeks?
Through the snack shop?
If this was going to be approved?
If we...
From selling additional food? Is your store not open if you don't sell food, and only open if you do sell food? Or do you sell other things, like, sorry, I don't know?
Yeah, we don't. We only sell food. We did sell teacher, uh, class t-shirts for a little bit, but they really don't sell yet.
So the school store doesn't exist unless you sell food?
The DECA store sells other supplies, school supplies.
Yeah, we...
And so we don't want to take that away from them, we don't want to be in direct competition.
You don't want to compete with them, you just want to compete with us. That's okay. Okay.
Okay. My opinion on this is that these kids started the year under the assumption that they were going to do this. And we're not talking about changing the policy, we're talking about suspending it for the rest of this year, we're not, so there's no kind of implied, you know, concessions made for next year, and we can make that perfectly clear. But the, you know, Michelle hit, hit it, that they, there is a calendar, and people sign up to do, so they're not all doing cow washes or plant sales or on the same weekend, and, and there are so many organizations at the school trying to raise money, you know, the ROTC's, we're, we're kind of the same, because they're raising money for their field trip. I mean, it's, it's a busy, you know, and I'm sure all of you belong to two or three different organizations besides the senior class, which you've been asked to raise money. Right? So I would, I'm going to support suspending this for the rest of the year, but just making it clear that it does not imply that we're changing, changing this, and that any class of 2019 should be aware of that.
I just want to comment on that too, now that I knew my question. So I can tell you I've gone from supporting it to not supporting it, to now I'm going to support it too, like Jonathan said. I think the way that, the way that this came about was wrong, should have been more advanced notice to you, how and why that happened, I don't know, and it's not uncommon that it did happen that way. But I can tell you right now, I mean, I support it now so that you can make some money over the next eight weeks, but I can tell you going forward, I would not support it. Most likely, I would want more information from the district for the reasons why we established this to begin with. I mean, this policy is policy for a reason, you know, this has already been vetted, and we made these decisions. But like Jonathan just said, I think it's unfortunate the way that it came about, because you were caught off guard a little bit, so I'm willing to help you a little bit there, because I want you to raise money. But I can tell you going forward that I, like Jonathan said, I would probably plan on next year, unless you can get the committee to change the policy as a whole.
The seniors, they're not going to be here next year.
Well, not you. Well, they pass it on, you know, when they pass the, the thing, pass on the information, you know, just know that I don't want to hear from next year, well, you did it for this class, you know, I mean, there, there has to be some long-term planning, and as you coach your junior year to become seniors, I think this would be a good conversation to have, because you have policies for a reason, there's a reason we did this, at the same time, you guys are sitting here, we know you need money, so that's why you're getting my vote, is to help you make money, not because I want to change the policy.
Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, sorry. As you can tell, I'm not, this, this is a little bit troubling, not just, it's also been sprung on us in the last 15 minutes too. I knew that, I did not think it was coming tonight, I thought it was coming next.
I knew that, I did not think it was coming tonight, I thought it was coming next week, and I had an opportunity, I knew that this was out there. But I think that this competitive food and beverage needs to be also um addressed, where it's, it states that you have to have any food or beverages sold and served outside of school meal, meal programs will meet USDA smart stacks and school nutrition standards at a minimum. So I think before we take any action at all, we should at least get a report back um on whether or not it meets that, because that's a standard, unless you're going to suspend that, be stupid, it has to meet that.
That James addressed that.
He didn't say that.
Jared said that, I hope it's James.
I didn't hear that they met these standards.
We do.
Yeah, Google, Google binder has like every USDA approved stack.
Okay.
We always have them.
All right.
Is there any further discussion?
But I also hope you hear me that I'm really uncomfortable undermining the administration on this too. I hope you understand that, it's, it's a lesson that you shouldn't take as a, as a victory, but, because it's not a good lesson in life.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
I might want to wait and hear the others.
They don't say it.
My god.
They're seniors, they're not going to be here.
Next year, the snack shop's going to fund the German program.
Right?
Okay, um moving on to the budget.
Thank you.
Um there's a uh recommendation of, of um DNF, which uh was just happening.
Oh.
Oh. Tight squeeze, it is a tight squeeze.
There's a lot of stuff back there too.
I hear you.
What was the motion?
Uh the motion was that we um recommend to the full committee that um we approve budget for, okay, I'll make the motion, I just, I gotta find the number.
It's been here.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The recommendation, um of the, the unanimous recommendation of the DNF is that we um recommend to the full committee the approval for forty-two million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars um for the budget for oh, uh two thousand nineteen um to be published for uh the public hearing.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'll start off.
Okay.
So having attended the finance meeting that we had right before this to make this decision, as a non-member, um I, as a woman, but was not allowed to deliberate um and only ask questions, which I did, um and I, I walked away from that meeting um a little bit torn, and I'm torn because I know this budget is for public hearing only and that we're hoping to get an audience, which I truly believe we're not going to get. Um so I struggle with the fact that I'm either going to agree with a budget proposal tonight or not for a reason that to me, at this point, sitting on this committee for ten years doesn't really make sense, because it seems like the hard work comes when we're talking to the administration and the city council, which doesn't come until the city public hearing. So I can sit here and say, yeah, I agree with whatever cuts we chose to do tonight, knowing it's only for public hearing purposes only and that it will likely change um going forward, but at the same time, I can't agree to what was put forward, but I know it was only put forward for public hearing purposes only. So I'm sure you hear the confusion in my voice um by just making this statement. But one thing I can say about the budget that's here tonight, I think the vocational program is getting a slam, and I would be such a hypocrite if I didn't advocate for vocational education, where I sit on the Essex Tech School Committee and advocate for vocational education out there. We are losing an administrator in vocational. Now, I know she wasn't hired when she left the position as to be that vocational administrator. However, in her capacity, we did get grant money um from her assisting in the grant that brought us a lot of money to come to this district, and when I asked the question, is, is it going to be administrative position replaced, the answer was no, however, we are going to get a coordinator. A coordinator can't evaluate vocational teachers to the extent and with the knowledge that they may need to understand what a complete evaluation would be for a vocational um teacher. In addition, we're hearing that the culinary arts department is pretty much going away because we don't have the capital, money to provide the correct or the needed equipment to keep that program going. However, we're prepaying special education with one-time money, and I haven't heard that Gloucester Red Foundation that came forward and tried to raise money for a music room, or anyone else is coming forward to try to save this program. So I can sit here and vote tonight, yes, to have a budget for a public hearing, but I can tell you I don't support how we're getting to that number, just for the sake of getting a reaction from the public. So I don't know what my support or non-support's going to be tonight, because I, I don't like what I heard, and I'm sure none of us like what we heard, but I don't think the right decisions are being made in here to get a response from the public, because there'll be no public response, most likely. So we're just going to be sitting here in two weeks, having the same conversation all over again, is how I feel.
This was not put together for a public reaction. This is, the administration put this together to come up with a reasonable um honest budget. That's what this is, that's what this reflects, is a reasonable, honest budget. Nothing about public reaction, they felt honestly that the contingency should be in there, because um to not um raise further morale problems within um a personnel, um to put out things that then we may withdraw later, um this, and that's, I mean, that's the, the understanding that I have, is that this was the best budget that they felt they could come up to without affecting um the educational progress that Gloucester's going to continue with. It's not about public reaction, it's not about anything, that's, that's us, that's not them. So I, I just don't want that, that out there, that this was put together to create a stir. It wasn't, it was put together to, it's my understanding, it was put together because these were what the administrative team came up with as the most efficient way to bring a number down that we knew was too high, we all knew that, we asked them to do this, and they came back with this as their recommendation.
Um.
It happens all the time.
It happens all the time. Um at the beginning of this budget process, we were asked to introduce a level service budget, which was the budget I, I am assuming was presented to us back in February, that, which was a five percent, five point four four percent increase. Um this budget that we, this adjustment to the budget does not reflect a level service budget, it reflects some cuts. Um there's some cuts in here that I am definitely seeing as red flags, I don't think we'd need to get rid of another assistant principal at the high school, I think we, that's a very important position to have. We still, we're talking about having another assistant principal at O'Malley, that's not even included in this budget, we only have two assistant principals there. Um I feel like that, you know, I can understand culinary, we don't have money for the equipment, which I, I feel is, we're doing a disservice to our kids by not providing that equipment, but five hundred thousand dollars to redo that program is a lot of money and we, and I can see that we can't afford that. Um I just, I would like to see us for the public hearing going with our original budget that we already put together. Um I mean, or maybe take out the German, you know, a couple of these things that we definitely can't do, but it just, it really bothers me that we're making cuts when we haven't been asked to by the administration yet on the city side.
So.
How did, how did?
No, just to, just to be clear, um so that everybody knows, on, on February twenty-eighth, the administration presented a budget um that was a level service budget, meaning that it included everything that we currently had. And um and this was after BNF had been working on the budget for um about six weeks. Um and during that time, we had requests for in excess of three hundred thousand dollars worth of requests from department heads and principals, none of which were um included in that level service budget. The budget that we got was um, was completely um just exactly what we, what we currently have. Now, the discussion that was had was um that we would ask the administration to come back and look for any efficiencies they could have without um reducing the services that we provided. Um and that's what they came back with. Now, um the two programs that would be lost out of this, that would not be, um, would be no longer there, one of them would be the culinary arts program and we, and it was, the problem with the culinary arts program is that we don't have a good room to put, do it in, and it'd be a capital, a substantial capital expense to create that. It's currently being taught in the home ec room, which does not meet the, doesn't meet code, doesn't meet uh professional standards, um which is not to say that to, in a community like Gloucester that's full of restaurants, we shouldn't have a culinary arts program. Um but the consensus was for um in, by the administration and, and by the BNF when they, when they voted to recommend this budget, was that it was an expensive program and rather than trying to find some, a, a lot of money other places, um that was the least harm done. When Superintendent Farmer was here, he always used to talk about doing the least worst thing, and unfortunately, that's kind of the situation we're in. Um we um can put forward this budget, it will go for public hearing, we will take, have the input of the um public, and then we will vote a budget on Jan, um April eleventh, which will then be passed on to the administration. They will have it until the end of April and the beginning of May, they will present their budget to the city council. What they present um is the budget, what we pass is what we're asked for, it's not the budget. Um the city council will then review, uh for above six weeks, they'll, they'll have to review that budget, um and eventually, there'll be a public hearing. Um but they have no capacity to um change um the, the school budget that's recommended by the administration, unless they can find that money someplace else in the budget. So they can't just change it, it's got to be a balanced budget, unlike the federal government, we have to have a balanced budget. We can't, we have to show revenue for everything that we're going to intend to spend next year, that's, that's state law, that's the way we operate. Um the danger, one of the things that's in this cut that they presented was to spend um some of our contingency money, which we budget every year for unexpected expenses, and the feeling is that we won't, we haven't had any substantial unexpected expenses this year, and we could, um, we are legally able to prepay um uh out-of-district tuition for special needs. And we would apply that a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to prepaying out-of-district. The danger in that is we remove that amount from the budget, then that is money that we will be short when we start next year, when we start this budget process next year. We will start out being a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the hole of our base of what we actually spent, potentially. You never know what we're really going to spend, but uh it, it's, it's, it's saying that right out of the gate. So I hope that there's a lively discussion about the budget. Um we are passing a budget that's up basically three and a, or for, for right now, we're passing a budget that's three and a half percent above what we were, got last year. Um it's been a really long time since we got the three and a half percent increase in our budget. So that would indicate that the likelihood of this budget going through um as presented tonight um is unlikely, um which doesn't mean that we, as the school committee, our position is to advocate for what we feel we need. And in the, on Jan, April eleventh, when we vote the budget, um we will have that discussion about what we want to put forth to the community and the administration. So I'm going to support this for now and see what the public has to say.
Um when you were talking about the culinary, the program that is there right now in the, under, um, the space is not appropriate or the equipment's not appropriate, there is some um health um compliance issues, health department compliance issues that we have in this space, and it is not really a, it's not, it's not part of the vocational program, let's be very clear about that, it is not part of the vocational program. This is more of a home ec situation that's on there now. To get a, a full-blown culinary, not only would it cost the half a million dollars in upgrades in the space, it would also, you know, cost considerable amount to um, to make changes into our vocational program, and that would determine, that needs to be determined with a very long discussion about our vocational program, barbary program, where are there other vocations that we should be looking at that, that are better, better used and will better serve our students? Very much want to make sure that, you know, people understood that that, the culinary that is there now is not a vocational culinary space.
So not so much in the merits of, of the level service, the merits of the budget
that was presented in front of us, just from like a, a macro level, the school committee and the administration are, you know, our, our charge here is to, in a responsible way, advocate for um what we need to do the job that the school department's tasked with doing. And this to me would be, you know, we had, we had instructions, level service budget, your level service budget was provided, and this to me seems like negotiating against ourselves in that you say, okay, well, here's, level service costs five percent, here's what we can do for three and a half, and you've already, um, you've already reduced the amount by which you'll be further reducing, and say, well, hey, listen, we need you to go down just one more percent, you know? Whereas if the ask becomes, we need you to chop two and a half percent, that as a, that from a negotiating standpoint, um puts a finer point on what it is that the school department's being asked to do. And so again, without getting to the merits of either of those budgets that have been put in front of us, just from the standpoint of if, if the school admin and the school committee truly feels that to provide the same service that the, the power we had this year, next year, it costs X, then I think that's what needs to be presented, um, you know, just from a, just from a general standpoint, I'm not telling you whether or not I, I do or do not like the level service budget that was put forward, because I don't, but from a negotiating standpoint, you know, that's just my two cents.
Who's it?
Um I'm not going to support this to be the budget to be posted for public hearing. I um liked what we did years ago when we put forward a budget and then listed tier one, tier two.
tier two, tier three, and made that public to the people that are having the conversation, which is us and the city and the mayor, to show what cuts would look like. I would like to put forward a level service budget and I'm willing to put a motion on the table if that, if there's a will to discuss that, as opposed to putting this budget for a public hearing. I'd rather see a level service budget go forward for public hearing with a list of what's to come as we get the information from administration and from the city council as far as how much money we're really going to get. Like you said, we're here to advocate and put our best forward for kids. This does not do that at all. I mean, I know it's going to hurt no matter what to get to the number, but I think we can do more work. I mean, there was a year they went through line item, you talked about cutting office supplies and things like that. Has that conversation happened? Probably not, because it's really not the time to have that conversation until later. But I think right now, putting forward a level service budget to the, to the community with a list of what cuts could like, and by the way, I do want to commend the administration for doing this, I know this is ugly work to do and there's probably more uglier work to come. But as a school committee member, I am not going to support this and I'd rather see a level service budget go forward to the public hearing.
Karen?
I just want to address the comment about like all the smaller things, like have we looked at supplies and everything? And I think the budget that has been brought forth has been really at bare bones. There's nothing added. All the requests that were brought forth, no staffers added, no, I mean, a lot of the goods of furniture, they're not even in the budget. So, but similar to this year, right? We don't ask for a lot for those kinds of things. We tend to put our budget in staff and that's really, I think, what we're seeing in this year's budget as a level service budget as well. But I also would support a level service budget for the hearing. And I think we already know what the tier one is. So this would be tier one. So I think, you know, I'm always one to advocate for what we really need. Like what, how do we talk about what we're going to lose if we don't tell people what we truly need and want for our kids? Now, you know, if somebody, you know, a principal or whatever comes forward and says, you know, something based upon shifting in class sizes and shifting in course selections, this is a change that I would want my budget anyway. Because this is the way I want, this is the mix and the good news is it has a little bit of a financial savings for us. Then that would be what I would like to see being the discussion as opposed to it's just level service. So that's not for public hearing, but that would be kind of my next step is, if you, in an ideal world, if you're realistic about where the kids are taking courses and what the enrollment is and everything, then what does that look like and do you save anything from that? So.
I think I'd like to make a motion.
There's a motion on the table, it's been seconded.
You can have two motions going at the same time.
You can, you want to amend the motion?
Well, I can either put another motion on the table or...
If this motion gets voted down, you can make another motion.
I just, I'm on that last year's book. And the date on this is 3/15/17, so I'm assuming this is what went to public hearing. We put forward a budget of two point seven nine percent. So we'd already done our tier one cuts before we went to public hearing.
The, well, I mean, with the motion, there's a motion on the table and it's to approve a budget for publication of, I'm going to lose my paper. For the forty-two thousand, four seventy-two, four six forty-eight. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay.
Have a roll call vote.
We're going to have a roll call. Roll call vote.
Miss Sweet?
No.
Mr. Dexter?
No.
Kathy Clancy?
No.
Mr. Falaiza?
No.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. It fails, four to two, or two to four, is the way I said. So you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we put forward a level service budget for a public hearing.
You want the number? That's what you need. I'll give it to you.
It's right there. Yep. Oh, it's not there.
I've got it here. It's four, three, no, this is two, seven, two, two, seven, three.
Yep. That number.
Second.
Did you get it, Mariana? I just want to say, I know, pretty much know we're not going to get the level service budget in the end, but I think there needs to be more discussion, not only amongst us as a full school committee, but with the full school committee, with administration and other stakeholders that are involved in this conversation. I think there's a better approach that we can try.
So although I would not vote to approve this budget, or our final budget sent back from the mayor's office, for the purpose of getting the discussion out there, I'd rather have this version out there for public consumption and start at this point and go from there with it. So I will vote to approve pushing this up to public hearing.
Karen?
And my rationale is, I think people need to know, and I don't mean necessarily the whole community, that probably won't show up for a public hearing, but the administration in particular and the city council need to know what it takes to run this school district. And we always, we always go with less. So I'd like them to actually see the number and know what, how difficult it is for us because if we're making significant cuts, I would hope that the city in total is kind of spreading the pain as well.
I'm going to vote no because this is being, we're not doing our due diligence on being good stewards of the budget for the citizens of Gloucester. There are places that we have found due to reduced enrollments where we can reallocate resources. And so I just feel this is being irresponsible.
Michelle?
I'm going to support this motion. I want to get up to the community how much money it does cost to run this schools. If we, it is good that we, you know, can take a look at, you know, ways to reduce things in the future, or in the future budget this year, but I want to get a level service budget out there right now. And this is what it is.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Miss Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Dexter?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Falaiza?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
No.
Ms. Chairman?
No. It passes four to two.
You can blame me.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.